Hello and welcome to Planning Commission meeting for November twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty five. We like to start with any public comments, not pertaining to any of the agenda items, just general public comments. Having none, I think we've got item three, the Health and Wellness Committee presentation.
Okay. I'm Jeff. I'm with the Health and Wellness Committee. And part of our agenda with Health and Wellness is to meet with other groups and other committees in the city and introduce ourselves and see how our goals interact and maybe overlap and how we can maybe inform each other about our work better and maybe, maybe our work can reflect on what we do. So, so I'm with Health and Wellness. And I wanted to introduce first our, our committee. We were established in September, two thousand and twenty one by resolution and we're known as the Health and Wellness Committee. And North Salt Lake established the committee for the purpose of addressing the physical and mental health, emergency preparedness, personal wellness, food and housing access issues, addiction services, and any other public health and welfare issues. And relevant review of research and programs related to physical and mental health, emergency preparedness, personal wellness, housing issues, and the creation of feasible and relevant strategy recommendations to address barriers to physical and mental health services. So our work kind of covers a wide variety of topics and issues, but you could probably already notice that some of those things might be ringing a bell related to the Planning Commission such as emergency preparedness and things like barriers to physical and mental health services. The, a lot of what we're doing, we wanted to, because we're a citizen committee and, you know, we feel like we report to the citizens, we want to make sure that the citizens really guide what we do and what our decision making, decision making is and where we kind of focus our resources. So we focused on the Utah Wellbeing Survey and North Salt Lake was one of fifty-one cities participating in the survey in two thousand and twenty four. It's organized by Dr. Courtney Flint at USU. And there were four hundred and thirty-nine viable surveys recorded in the two thousand and twenty-four survey effort. The previous year, we did it in two thousand and twenty-three, that had six hundred and five responses. The adult population of Salt Lake, North Salt Lake was estimated at fifteen thousand and six hundred based on the community survey by the U.S. Census. And the four hundred and thirty-nine survey responses in twenty to twenty-four represent two point eight percent of the adult population and have a conservative margin of error of four point six one percent. So even though it's a, only two point eight percent of the citizens responded, it's still considered statistically analyzable, basically. I'm sure there's a better word for it, but basically it's still relevant and it still reflects, it still can be construed to reflect the views of the population at large. So the survey respondent characteristics, just to get an idea of who responded, it was ninety-eight point nine percent full-time residents, only one point one, one point one percent part-time. The residency range from less than a year to sixty-seven years. The average was thirteen point one years. The median was nine years and five years or less was thirty-five percent. So about a third are newer residents. And zip codes were eight, four, oh, five, four was ninety-seven point six percent. So that was the majority. The area included, if we kind of consider the city to be divided into east, west, and midtown, you can see that we have about forty percent east, twenty percent midtown, and forty percent west. So pretty evenly distributed geographically. And the, I'm sorry, the personal well-being in North Salt Lake, how would you rate your overall personal well-being? If we look at this, we have about half of the respondents are at four and the majority are obviously three, four, and five. If we look at community well-being, the question was, how would you rate your overall well-being, how would you rate overall well-being in North Salt Lake, meaning the population at large? And we're looking at similar numbers. It's a lot of three, fours, and fives. So pretty high, pretty high rankings for both personal and the view of community well-being. And the average rating of personal and community well-being over time in North Salt Lake, you can see if we compare two thousand and twenty-three and two thousand and twenty-four, they're pretty, pretty stable numbers. We're getting similar results both, in both years. So they're fairly comparable. This is where we kind of get into where the rubber meets the road here, which is the, the actual topics that people focused on as far as their concerns. And we see safety and security being very highly ranked, family life, there's a lot of kind of similarity there. With the, when you look at the lower rankings, we're looking at things like cultural opportunities, local environmental quality, education, transportation, social connections. So you can see already that a lot of the things that are the kind of lowest ratings of satisfaction by residents are things that really are directly relevant to what the Planning Commission's doing, like transportation and environmental quality, to the extent that you guys have an ability to affect that. So if we look at the well-being domain importance in North Salt Lake, we're looking at similar numbers. This is how important are the following, I'm sorry, how important are the following categories to your overall personal well-being? So the top one is basically, how would you, how would you rate your level of personal well-being? And then the, the next survey is, how would, how would you rate what's important to you? And we're looking at similar numbers. We have cult, the lower numbers, the lower, lower rated numbers are cultural opportunities, transport, education, social connection, local environmental qualities kind of in the middle. So, but a lot of similar issues and again, are a lot related to geography, transportation, environment. So we think there is a, you know, when I was first, when we first got to pick groups and I thought, the Planning Commission, what was, what would health and wellness have to do with the Planning Commission? And then I kind of looked into these numbers and looked into, you know, the citizens' responses to these kinds of surveys and it seems like they're pretty directly relevant. Or at least there's a significant overlap in where health and wellness may be able to help planning and planning might be able to help health and wellness. So if we look at the well-being matrix, this kind of shows the data in a different format. And again, if we look at kind of the, if we go right to the, the bad spot, the worst-case scenario buttons here, we're looking at local environmental quality being kind of the lower rating, lower rated category. And again, if we look at yellow, we're looking at the usual suspects, cultural opportunities, education, transport, social connections. And then connection with nature kind of popped up here, which is also there. And I think we see a lot of that with like the Parks and Trails Committees and things like that, where a lot of people really value the parks in North Salt Lake and value outdoor activities. And community connection, we're kind of seeing, how connected do you feel to North Salt Lake as a community? We're kind of in the middle here. We're kind of lower ranking than we were on the previous questions as far as what, how do you feel about your well-being and how do you feel about the well-being of the community? In this case, we're seeing a little lower with connection. And considering how social connections kept popping up as a, a lower ranking item in the surveys, this makes sense. And this kind of compares communities across all the cities and you can see North Salt Lake is, we're in the, we're kind of, I think, near the top of the lower third. So I think this is specifically focused on community connection. And I think if we think about our geography, where there is a pretty stark divide between, where, you know, kind of the areas that a lot of us would think of as being the east or midtown compared to the west, I think we can, we're not, we wouldn't, shouldn't be too surprised that community connections are given a lower number. Concerns in North Salt Lake, this is kind of, we have to kind of flip our, our eyes here and look at this the opposite way of the previous charts that we had. In this case, the top ones are the bad ones. So not too surprising, air quality ends up popping up in the top, water supply, water quality. I've recently found out that North Salt Lake actually has one of the hardest waters in Davis County. We have dramatically harder water than even neighboring Bountiful. So our water, water quality is significantly different than even our neighbors, even though we're in the same county. We have public safety, the Great Salt Lake, and traffic. We kind of, a lot of these categories relate to, again, our geography and kind of our local, our particular local, local issues to our, our city. And this is the next topic. So does anyone have any questions or anything? I think overall, like I said, I was, when I was first thinking about, you know, talking to you, I wouldn't, didn't really want, didn't really know how I would connect health and wellness to, to planning. And then looking at the survey results of citizens and kind of what the, the opinions of the people that we're using to guide where we're focusing our energy in the Health and Wellness Committee, a lot of that seems to overlap with, with issues that you probably are preoccupied, if not, you know, conscious of as, as the Planning Commission.
Was there any kind of the data that separated the east side and the west side and the midtown for like that connection to Salt Lake? Was that, I'd be curious if, if that was looked at separately?
I, I don't know if we, I don't remember having that in our survey results. I'm not sure if you guys remember that yourselves. I don't remember that. Yeah. I think when we, I feel like there was some information related to that when we had the, the city meetings where we had different meetings in different elementary schools and we're talking to people. I think there was slight, subtly different numbers, but I think overall, the answers were fairly consistent. You were only looking at a few percentage points off at that point as far as the concerns related to transportation, the concerns related to cultural opportunities and things. So I think, you know, and I think some of these things we might be addressing already just through kind of planning that's happened and already, like if we think of the Hatch Park renovation, that's something that I think would, would probably result in some higher numbers as far as cultural connections or maybe social connections. If we, if we, when we finish Hatch Park and we have a more central social setting for us to kind of congregate to or where city events, city events can happen, it might help create that, that connection that people are looking for.
Thank you for that. And again, appreciate you being here and share this data with us. It's interesting. Is there any single thing that jumps out to the Health and Wellness Committee in terms of what we ought to be trying to achieve? You know, we're, we're doing a general plan update and so forth. Is there anything obvious or just continuation of a lot of the things like Hatch, Hatch Park and so forth?
A lot of what we, something we're noticing is I think we try to hold some events and when we hold events, the, the attendees of the events might, might, the location of the event might steep, might dictate kind of the population of attendees we see. Like we have the night out, night out, night out against crime and we hold that in Legacy Park. And what we're kind of, some of the feedback we're getting from citizens and, and the kind of word of mouth we're hearing is that a lot of people who aren't near Legacy Park and aren't in that kind of west-side Foxborough area, were less likely to attend events in those locations. Likewise, if we had events at Tunnel Springs, we probably would see less participation or, or attendance by people from the west side. So again, I think Hatch Park might be kind of maybe the magic, hate this expression, sorry, the magic bullet, I could say that, which is that if we can have events at kind of a more centralized place, that might cure some of those issues. But we also are thinking a lot about communication, a lot of the kind of social connections, community connections. We want to think about how our work can, can relate to communication. A lot of Davis County health initiatives are about making sure information is given out to the public and, and the public is informed better about what health and wellness opportunities are available, what resources are available at the county level. And I think we can think of that at our, at our own city level, what, what resources are available to help citizens, whether that is mental health and, you know, family counseling, personal counseling to things like vaccination drives, things that are, you know, related to medical health. So I think there's a lot we can do, but I, I think having a focus on how can we make sure that our messaging gets out to everyone? I mean, we are a diverse population that's geographically separate, so we have to make sure with that when we message, when we, when we craft our messaging, that we know it's going to reach everybody. And that means we have to hit it on different fronts as well. We have to focus on some on social media, some on just direct outreach to community centers. We've had a member of our group attend the senior lunch, senior lunch bunches, which is really helpful. We're getting a lot of feedback from the senior population through that kind of outreach. So we have to kind of be creative and, and adaptable and be varied in our approach to see if we can make sure we get feedback from everybody and, and then respond appropriately to that.
Thank you.
Great. Thanks and have a good Thanksgiving, everyone.
Next up is Agenda Item Four, Consideration of a Proposed Code Amendment to Title Ten, Modifying the Setbacks and Maximum Size of Accessory Structures.
Okay. So we received an application from Ruben Woolsey on this particular code amendment. So in two, before two thousand and eighteen, accessory structures on residential lots, they were not limited by size except for that they couldn't be bigger than the main dwelling or the main building on the property. And we changed that when we were updating some other things and we thought, you know, let's make accessory structures no bigger than fifty percent of the footprint. And we were really thinking about smaller lots and how we didn't want to have really big accessory structures on the smaller lots that we were getting in the city. So Mr. Woolsey wanted to put in a shop on his property and came to us and we were looking at the code and we were looking at the old application that we hadn't updated and we had some conflicting information. The code said that you couldn't be the more than fifty percent, but our application hadn't been updated, so he was a little bit confused. So as we started talking about it and he started showing us what he wanted to do, we said, well, what really would have to happen is if you wanted to do this, you could propose a code amendment. So he's filed an application requesting that. So the language that you have before you would be effective only on lots that are a half acre or larger for accessory structures. And the proposed change would be that accessory structures could exceed that fifty percent footprint, but could not exceed the total footprint of the main structure. And if the building was bigger than eight hundred square feet, it would need to be set back further from the side and rear property lines. As we started talking about this as a DRC on the setbacks for these accessory structures, our building official reminded us again that our code is not in, is not in conformance with the International Building Code for accessory structures. Our code right now says that accessory structures can be three feet away from the property line and they can be as low as one foot away from the property line if you put a one-hour firewall on the sides adjacent to the property lines. The building code, International Building Code is the minimum setback is five feet and you can reduce it to three feet if you have the one-hour fire rating. So he asked that we address that at the same time that we're addressing this particular code amendment. So in the analysis of the proposed code amendment, I took some screenshots, some aerial shots just to kind of show some other properties in the city that are larger than a half acre that have large accessory structures, because I wanted to show you the scope of the, the proposal to the change. So we're not changing the coverage in the rear yard. Our code already says you can't have an accessory structure that covers more than twenty-five percent of your rear yard. So in these two examples, you can see, the first example on the left, that lot is point eight four acres. Their rear yard is actually twenty-four hundred, twenty-four thousand square feet and the dwelling is three thousand square feet. The accessory structure that they have there is just short of the three thousand square feet at twenty-nine hundred sixty-eight approximately, as measured on Google. But you can see that because of the size of the lot, that the larger accessory structure really doesn't have as much impact on the neighboring property owners or on the, the property itself. This other example on the right is a point seven-two acre lot. It has twenty-one hundred square feet in the backyard. The dwelling is twenty-nine hundred square feet and the accessory structures they have there, there are two of them. There's a twenty, or a two thousand square foot building and an eight hundred square foot building. Again, this is just to demonstrate how it might work on, how it is already working in the community and how it might work. We also don't have a lot of these side, these sized lots in the main part of the city. We have some bigger ones up on the hillside that are still being built. This is Mr. Woolsey's property over on Odell Lane. He has a point eight eight acres. The rear yard is about fifteen thousand square feet. The dwelling's about twenty-five hundred square feet. And the proposed structure that he wants to build is twenty-two hundred square feet. You can see that in the red box here. He's also drawn a picture of this to show how this structure would fit on the property and, and a, and a visualization of that particular building that he wants to build. So the DRC has reviewed this. They did make a favorable recommendation to the, change the code and we've scheduled a public hearing for you tonight. So again, the structure would be allowed with this change to exceed the fifty percent footprint of the main dwelling. It would not be allowed to go taller than the main dwelling or taller than twenty feet total in height. And then increased setbacks if it were over eight hundred square feet for the accessory structure. Do you have any questions about the proposed change?
Just to clarify, the increased setbacks, that's matching the IBC?
Yes.
Commissioner Marsh, the rear yard is measured the same for all lots or like corner lots are different or how, I guess, how is the rear yard calculated?
The rear yard is the yard opposite of the main frontage. So if the house is a corner lot, it's opposite of the, wherever the front door faces.
So on a, but on a typical lot, rear is, you have rear setback that's defined by the main, by the primary structure and then rear yard begins after that rear setback or from the, from the edge of the building?
It begins at the edge of the building.
Okay.
So that's your total rear yard.
Okay. And that's all defined in?
Yes.
Okay. No other questions? We'll move on to the public hearing. So anybody have anything, any comments about this agenda item? You're welcome to come to the podium and. All right. Having none, we'll close the public meeting and we'll move to discussion and possible motion.
Commissioner Marsh, I moved the Planning Commission, recommended the City Council proposed amendments to City Code Sections ten, ten dash, or ten dash, ten dash, three and ten dash, nineteen dash, three regarding the setback, regarding the setbacks for accessory structures and the maximums, maximum size of accessory structures on lots greater than one-half acre in size with the following findings. One, the proposed amendment is in accord with the comprehensive general plan, goals and policies of the city. Two, changed or changing conditions make the proposed amendment reasonably necessary to carry out the purposes stated in this title.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Commissioner Holbrook, second.
Do we have a second? I'm all in favor.
Aye.
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 It passes unanimously.
Okay. This will go to the City Council next week.
Okay. Next up, Agenda Item Five, Consideration of a Proposed Code Amendment to Title Ten, Chapter One.
Okay. In the administration of the building envelopes in Eaglewood Cove and some of the other hillside lots, we've had some, we've come to the realization that we need to do a couple amendments and clarify a few things in our ordinances. So that's how this proposed change came about. So the first, what, what we have here, this is just an example. So this is the, the slope map that we used for Eaglewood Cove, Phase thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen. This is the kind of the ten thousand foot level, knowing we put a, we put notes on the plat that said each individual lot will have a site-specific topographical plan done so that we can actually identify the areas that are thirty percent slope. But you can see in this particular, these particular lots, and there's no reason I chose these except for, well, I'll tell you in a minute, but it's because you can see that inside the building envelope, we have slopes that are greater than thirty percent. Now, our intent was that we would have site-specific topography done, which is being done, but, and some of these green areas go away, they actually turn white. But I, what I wanted to show you here is in that lot thirteen, fourteen, you can kind of see there's a little finger that comes out on the, that. And there's a change of, there, when you have a finger of slope come in like that, if you change more than five feet in vertical, if the slope is thirty percent for less than five feet vertical, then we actually just disregard that. So one of the changes in the proposed code amendment would increase that to eight feet rather than the five feet. So that's why I wanted to show you that to you, just to kind of give you an idea of why these particular issue came before us, because some of the people that were buying these lots didn't understand that some of the areas in the building envelope might not be buildable because they're over thirty percent slope. That doesn't mean they're not safe, it just means that we had to take another step in this. So in order to facilitate that, we decided to take a look at these particular code amendments. So the first sections that we are changing are to the definitions. And the first thing we added is a definition of the geologic hazard study. So just outlining what is actually in a geologic hazard study. The second change is a clarification to the lot area, the buildable lot area and the non-buildable area and adding references back to the sensitive lands chapter, so chapter twelve. And then there was a duplicate definition for non-buildable area and also lot area non-buildable. So we didn't need two definitions for the non-buildable area of a lot. In addition, so we had a, a definition change to the word under geologic hazard for unstable soil to problem soil. And our intent was to make that more broad so that we could determine what types of soils would be issues that we needed to have addressed in the geologic hazard studies. But as it turns out, the term problem store, problem soil is actually a scientific term that has a definition that narrowed the scope of what we were trying to do here. And so we have been asked by our city engineer to add a definition to the ordinance that's before you tonight that defines what a problem soil is. And that would be this definition, soils which may present a hazard from specific soil and/or rock properties such as collapsible soil, corrosive soil and rock, land subsidence and earth fissures, soluble soil and rock or unstable soils. So that is a change to that from what you have in your packet. Moving on to the sensitive areas district, so these are the changes that are being made there. Again, we are, first, we are replacing the term accepted engineering geology report with the applicant's approved geologic hazard study. So correcting the name to be geologic hazard. So correcting the name to be geologic hazard study because that's what we refer to it in the code, we don't refer to it as a report. So that has been changed, and it has to be approved, not accepted. In the next section in 10, 12, four, responsibility for the geologic hazard studies. So this is on single family, or on single lots when you're getting a building permit. So removal of Section A is just some unneeded verbiage that is, kind of defines what a geologic hazard study is, and that is taken place by the definition being added to Chapter 1. And then the next section is some clarification on who is responsible for submittal of the geologic hazard studies, and then some clarifications to the minimum requirements that could be increased if there is compelling evidence. So the geologic hazard study that is approved are the guiding factors of how, of what the minimum construction standards are for that lot, for the building that's being built there. And this basically puts it back on an approved geologic hazard study, so with compelling evidence. And then a clarification on the site-specific study for a building permit that the geologic hazard report contains both engineering geological, engineering geologic hazards and geotechnical engineering analysis. So those are two specific review terms that we wanted to make sure was very clear in the ordinance. So on the lot standards, this is kind of the biggest changes that we are going through. First off was what I explained to you about the eight feet instead of the five feet that I showed you on that drawing. Just a clarification that when you're, any portion of a lot that exceeds 15% for a vertical distance of greater than eight feet would need to have a building envelope defined. So when we're approving a subdivision, this tells us when we absolutely are required to have a building envelope defined. Not always required to have a building envelope, sometimes we do just for other reasons besides geologic hazards, it could be because of vegetation or scenic easements, you've seen those on some of the plats over the years. But the things that we wanted to specify is what could not be in a building envelope. So the first section is the exclusions from the building envelope, so there can't be setbacks, the required minimum setbacks cannot be part of the building envelope. Any easements or rights of way that travel through the property cannot be part of the building envelope. Any known geologic hazards, and those are identified in the geologic hazard study. Any slopes that are greater than 30%, unless certain circumstances exist, and we'll get into that, that's down in the next section. And then critical vegetation that is needed for soil erosion, and again, these are all the things that would be identified in the geologic hazard study. And then any other areas that the study itself identified that needed to be avoided unless it was mitigated. The second change here is specifying that the circumstances when slopes that are greater than 37%, but less than 50% could be included in a building envelope. And so that's existing subdivision lots with building envelopes that contain those slopes that can be disturbed, which may be disturbed with the site-specific study that contains slope stability modeling and meets the minimum acceptable factors of safety. So there's nothing inherent that just says 30% is the magic number, that it's unsafe to build on anything over 30%. There are things that can be done to slopes over 30% engineering-wise that will mitigate the hazards. And so what we wanted to address was if those circumstances exist where it can be safely mitigated, then we want to provide that. So for example, if you have, in a particular lot, you might have a knoll that's over 30%, but if you take that knoll off, it actually increases the factor of safety, because you're reducing that 30% slope by taking that off. Sometimes if you cut into a 30% slope, it becomes steeper on the other portion of the lot. So what we're trying to say here is that if we're, if we're making it safer than it is by removing the 30% slope, you can remove the 30% slope. So it's not a strict prohibition on deserving anything over 30%. Then, let's see, so some, some standards for that, so if you're going to have a new subdivision lot and you're going to have building envelopes that have 30% slope or greater in the building envelope, it can't be more than 25% of the building envelope. So we don't want to have something that has just a little corner that's less than 30% and the majority of the building envelope is over 30%. It still should have, this should be an isolated situation where, where you saw on that map, a little bit of green comes into the building envelope. And then again, that you have to have 5,000 square foot minimum that's less than 30% slope, and that's been a standard that's been in our code for a long time. And the third one is that no permits can be issued for retaining walls, grading, or structures, or other improvements unless the study, the approved study and the slope stability factors are met. So we've put in some exceptions to allow the slopes over 30%, but only if they can be mitigated and made safer than the current situation on the lot. And then this is an adjustment to the slope protection easements. So this clarifies that critical slopes does not include slopes that are greater than 30% when that vertical rise is greater than eight feet. Current practice has not included, it has not included slopes that are greater than five feet in vertical. So any slopes that are under 30% can also be designated as critical slopes if they're identified in the approved geologic hazard study. So like I said, 30% is not the magic number, everything under 30% is safe, not necessarily. Sometimes things under 30% are not safe because of, or they're not stable, let's put it that way, they're not stable because of the particular soil's conditions. So you could have a slope that's 45% and it's safer than some slope that might be 25% just based on the type of soil and based upon what kind of mitigation you get. So we're just trying to make these things a little bit more clear in this particular code amendment. Do you have any questions about that?
Ms. Commissioner Stone, I just have a question about, did you explain why it went from five to eight?
So five's also not a magic number. The topography lines generally are two-foot intervals, and so it's kind of easier if we do it by two-foot intervals, but there's not any particular rhyme or reason why it's five or seven or eight. We just wanted to make it a little bit easier for mitigating these slopes.
Okay.
On the previous slide and exclusions, there was mention of right-ofways and easements. Would that be both public and private easements and right-ofway? For example, up on the steep slopes, there are some private right-ofway for pipelines and things like that, would that be included, or is this talking only public right-ofway like city ones?
Yeah, they're not including the public right-ofway, so we, or any, any, any existing easements that are already through the property, regardless of whether they're public or private, could not be included in the building envelope, which is a practice we do right now, but this puts it into code.
Thank you.
I, I understand the responsibility for doing the hazard study following to the developer. When we talk about requirements may be increased if compelling evidence, that's compelling is very subjective, but that is on the city's side of...
But it's from the report. So if the report says that you can't, like if we, if we have an ordinance that said, if our ordinance said you can't build on anything over 30%, but in the, in the particular geologic hazard studies, it says these slopes that are 25% shouldn't be built on because they have these geologic hazards. That would be more stringent than what the code says. And so that's when we would put that in place, when the approved geologic hazard study called.
But the city is the one who's determining that's compelling?
Yes. Yes.
Commissioner Marsh, Sherri, can you speak to, like, for example, where a lot of the, like, is a fair amount of this governed by, like, the International Building Code or building standards, or where, where was a lot of this sourced or referenced from?
So our entire geologic hazard code that we have is very similar to most of the other communities along the Wasatch Front, and I wouldn't like to say we plagiarized it, but we work together and share the knowledge, we work with our geo consultants, we've worked with UGS, and these are some standard practices that have been adopted across the Wasatch Front. And so that's really where they start from, and then as we've practiced and have refined them, and as each city does that, we learn from each other on what are the best practices to put into code. So that's really where these started from.
Thank you.
So Sherri, in the definition of like, a geologic hazard study, it makes a point to have it be a joint effort between an engineering geologist and a geotechnical engineer. I'm curious if this is just a standard that exists in these other codes, or that's what it's evolved to, or do we have specific experience where both of those expertises are needed and maybe we're lacking in an instance or something like that?
So we, we do have experience with that, and it is, it is required because they have two different expertise. So the geotechnical engineer has to be informed by the engineering geologist, and if you don't have those two pieces together, that really, you get only part of the picture. And we've always had that in our code, so it already said that the study has to be performed by, these two individuals have to be participants, they have to be licensed, there's certain experience that they have to have, like it's five years' experience, and they have to have the certain degrees and licenses to qualify for that. And so this is just clarifying this in all of the different parts of the code, not just the one section. So we're just adding those words in so that it's very clear that, that, and we just want it clear everywhere that those two individuals need to be a party to the study. And as has been explained to us by our geotechnical consultant, that that's really important to have both of those two parties. And we have had experience with certain geologic hazard studies that have been made that did not use an engineering geologist, and they didn't have enough of the science to address all of the issues, and we had to go back rounds and rounds with those particular geotech firms that didn't have the expertise. So we have learned that, painfully so.
Looks like no other questions, thank you for that. We will open the public hearing again and invite anyone that has comments on this matter. Seeing done, we'll close the public meeting and move to discussion and possible motion.
This is Commissioner Jorgensen, I'll offer the motion. I do want to just interject one comment, I appreciate this, I think it's important considering geohazards can be, you know, a big, big deal to somebody who's impacted by some type of a failure, so I think it's very important. I would like to see the city adopt periodic updates to the, what do we call it, the sensitive overlay map or whatever, and maybe, maybe make sure that that gets updated at five to 10-year frequencies and not more than that.
Yeah, and we also, our, our city engineer would like to have it updated for earthquakes as well, and that's an issue that you've raised in the past. We did get some good news today that we'll be advertising for a staff engineer, so our city engineer will have the help that is so desperately needed since our previous assistant left the, the city on a medical leave. So we're, she's quite relieved that we'll be able to get her some help, and then we'll be able to get some of those things updated a lot quicker.
Thank you. With that, unless there's anything else, I'm prepared to offer a motion. This is Commissioner Jorgensen, I moved that the planning commission recommended the city council to propose amendments to the city code sections 10-1-39, 10-12-2, 10-12-4, 10-12-22, and 10-12-24 regarding the definitions for geologic hazards, building envelopes, and required geologic hazard studies for lots within the sensitive overlay area with the following findings. One, the proposed amendment is in accord with the comprehensive general plan, goals and policies of the city. Two, changed or changing conditions make the proposed amendments reasonably necessary to carry out the purposes stated in this title.
Thank you, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Commissioner Stone, I'll second.
Thank you, we have a second, I'm all in favor.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. We'll move to agenda item six, consideration of a conditional use permit.
Thank you. This one should be pretty fast. It is a conditional use permit for a privately-owned recreational ground and facility not open to the general public or to which admission charge is made. And we've seen a few of these come through recently. This is up in Eaglewood Cove 13 subdivision. The Nielsen family owns lot 1301, which you can see identified here on the map, and directly across the street, I don't know if they've purchased these lots yet or if they're just under contract or what, but they're at least far enough along that they have their contractor making conditional use permit application to put their own private recreational facilities on those two lots. The two lots are divided by an HOA-owned and maintained access to a subdivision, detention, retention, stormwater infrastructure. I don't know what, which is which, the city engineer's told me like five times and I still don't know, for this, this location, I know the difference. So anyways, they are wanting to install things like a tennis court, a pickleball court, a hot tub, a pavilion for family gathering, and then some landscaping to support this beautiful infrastructure. And the planning department and engineering department have not received a building permit application yet, or any sort of official application, but we have been working with the contractor and reviewing plans preliminarily to make sure that they're going to be compliant with the maximum building heights, and their retaining wall heights and where they're trying to build. Most, they're only building in the building envelopes, which we just talked about and showed you some examples from this subdivision. And so there's very little impact to the slopes and hillside, aside from what's already permitted. And tonight, you guys are just approving the land use component of this as a private recreational ground instead of a single-family building lot, and then it'll be left up to staff to administer what that looks like. They could always come back and change this concept plan and say, actually, we want the pavilion over here, and that's fine as long as the land use is approved. So the DRC is recommending approval of this conditional use permit with no conditions, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
I have a question about, I understand this is a privately-owned recreational facility, meaning they're not, what you were saying, you're not, like, it's not open to the lot. However, if they were to like, have a private event here, is that allowed?
Yeah. They could have their daughter's wedding here, or a sweet 16 party, like they can have their own events, the same way they would use their yard. It's basically, you can look at it, an extension of their yard across the street or on a different parcel.
But you can't use it for commercial?
No, it can never be used for commercial. Sherri just unmuted, so I'm sure she has some more insight that I'm missing.
I was just going to say, yeah, they can invite as many guests as they want to the property, they just can't charge an admission fee, so they can't do a commercial operation. They wouldn't be able to rent this out for an event venue, and it's not really built for that anyway. It's a pretty small pavilion, there's a small, kind of one of those swim spas is what it looked like on the plans, the pickleball court and the tennis court. And then they're fencing this, they've had, they have approval from the HOA, and they're going to fence across the driveway that enters into the detention pond so that, you know, people just walking by can't go in, but the HOA will have access for the maintenance of the, of the pond through that gate.
And I just want to add on that, I don't know that they've succeeded 100% in getting the written authorization yet from the HOA, but I know for a fact they're in talks with the HOA because I've been CC'd on emails. So this will hinge, we're approving the land use tonight, they still need to get their approvals from the HOA to build anything here. Their design review committee, the HOA has their own little group, and also just using that access and how they want it maintained and things like that. But that'll all be worked out before we do the official building permits for these lots or issue any sort of... or issue any sort of grading permit.
Well, this is awesome, so I'm gonna move that the planning commission approve the conditional use permit.
After public hearing?
No, for privately owned recreational facilities not open to the general public at seven sixteen south and seven twenty-six south, Tanglewood Loop with no conditions.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Commissioner Marsh, second.
We have a second and all in favor?
Aye.
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 It passes unanimously. Action update.
Do you want to come up here?
So just to give you an update, the city council approved the zone change over on eleven hundred north on that boundary line agreement for the eleven hundred north cross crossing subdivision. And then I wanted to remind you of the Christmas party next week on Thursday at six o'clock at the golf course at the Eaglewood Center Reception Center. And in addition to that, we wanted to say thank you tonight to Commissioner Ward and Commissioner Tucker for their full two terms of service, and we have these plaques that we've had made up for you to thank you for your service, so I'm gonna give you these each, and it's been a real pleasure to work with you guys, I wish you could serve three terms. Certainly.
Thank you.
If I could change that ordinance to make it three terms, I probably would, but I don't think that they'll let me change that ordinance again. But it's just really been great to have you here. We decided to give you these plaques tonight because we weren't sure if we would be having a December meeting. It looks like we will be having a December meeting because we need to deal with some wildland urban interface codes, so that is coming in two weeks. Yay, thank you legislature for making us do that. But anyway, I just wanted to present you with these plaques and thank you for your service because it really has been awesome to work with you. We've interviewed your replacements, we've made recommendations to the mayor, we're still waiting for word from him to tell us who he is going to select and appoint, but they'll be appointed next week at the next week's planning, at the city council meeting.
Thank you. Commissioner Tucker, do you want to say anything? No.
I want to say something.
I would just say that I've enjoyed my eight years here, I hope I've contributed in some way to good planning.
You have, and I wanted to tell you both, I am so appreciative of both of you because when I came in, you were, I think, just ending your first term, and you were both so knowledgeable and so helpful and kind, and it helped loop me into the group and get me rolling and understand what a planning commission is, so I just wanted to tell you guys thank you as well. You've been so great for my experience, thank you.
Now we got to meet minutes.
Minutes.
Don't leave me hanging, dude.
Yeah, approval of planning commission minutes of November twelfth, twenty twenty-five, any edits?
Commissioner Dorgensen, offer a motion to approve the planning commission meeting minutes as drafted for the November twelfth, twenty twenty-five planning commission meeting.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
They are approved, we are adjourned.
Who seconded that motion?
Tucker. Thank you.
And I got some cookies from Parsons, so if you didn't get one already, please get one, because we thought it would be fun. Oh, and to celebrate, Mackenzie's having her baby on Friday. Yes, little Gracie will be here on Friday, we're so excited. I'm excited for the baby, I'm not excited for maternity leave.
I'll come talk to you, I'll give you the four one one.